The United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting. Let's open it up with a roll call. Mr. Dankert, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Baskin.
Present.
Obala.
Present.
Waller. Osmah.
Present.
Shusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
All right, and because Ms. Waller is gone, we're going to do a roll call every time, Tom. Looking for...
No, we don't have to.
Okay.
She's not on. She will be here. She's running.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll write on. Okay. Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions. Number one.
So move the motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approving minutes from the meeting of April 19th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three is recognitions under recognition awards. We have a new honorary council member today. Christopher Moore has met, I think, most folks in the room. But Christopher, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone, introducing yourself, and tell us all about what we need to know about Christopher Moore.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Honorable Councilmember, and Police Chief, and who's our Washington, my name is Christopher Moore.
Christopher, you can take your mask off up there.
All right.
Yeah, mic's on.
My name is Christopher Moore, and I think I met on a lot of faces around Austin. I think I know a lot of faces that I know. I think, but I'm a simple guy and just trying to know the community. I'm a community leader, too. I got a organization called the Liberian Association for Progress in Austin, Minnesota, would deal with things that ain't a community, deal with property and stuff, and help each other.
Nice.
So since I moved here in Austin, I grew a lot since I moved here. It's a place of opportunity. Whatever you want to do, you want to... Anything you want to do in Austin, you can do it if you put your mind to it. So I'm a Liberian. I'm from Liberia. I came into the United States 2003... Oh, 2000... 2000, in 2000. And the first day that I moved in, it was in New York City. So after New York City, I was in New York for like two, three years in Staten Island in New York. So I had my parent... My dad lived there, and my stepmother lived there. I got two sisters that live in New York. So in New York, I went to school there. I graduated 2003 in New York. After I graduated, my grandparents were in the United States before me, and they came since in the 90s. So when it came, the first place that I moved at was Texas. I was in Texas for so many years, and later on we came. We came later on when I was in New York. My grandparents, things were getting tough in New York, so I told them I have to move to Texas. I spent a little bit of time in Texas. You know, I spent like, I think it's two years in Texas until 2006, I went to Iowa. I lived in Iowa, Waterloo, Iowa, too. It's a big community. They have a lot of Liberians and universal, like, people from all over in Waterloo, Iowa, too. So when I left there, I spent quite a lot of time in Waterloo, Iowa. I left Waterloo, Iowa, 2011. I came back to Minnesota because I had a lot of friends around. So things were not okay in Waterloo, Iowa. So things were... It was okay, but not okay for my family. So I had to move from down there and came... They stayed out there. They tried moving to Watertown, Minnesota. So they had like a factory down there, too, or JBS and stuff. So I moved my family over there. Moved there, and I think I spent like a year. I spent like a year plus over there. So after I had my last child, I left. I came in Austin. So my friend encouraged me to move in Austin. So I came. I came one day, and I just seen the place like... The day I stepped the place, I would start working at... I would kill people. So the first day I filled out the application, they called me and said, "I can start work anytime." So I said, "Okay." So when I go, when I go back home in Watertown, I'm gonna tell my family that I will move here first and see how best I can move here. So after I came in Austin, I haven't moved here. But Austin is a great place. I got my kids here. They go to school here. So... And when we move here, we didn't have Liberians community. We had all the nationality, like, I didn't knew the community that were. And we had Liberians, but maybe it was two, three Liberians. So we decided that when people want to move for all... In all the state, we tell them good thing about Austin. Austin is a good place to live. And luckily, I met a councilman, Abada. Abada, he used to live right by me, in the apartment building right by home mail museum, the old museum right there. And I never knew him. I sometimes would see him outside, like... I know... One day, I never talked to him, like, we never talked. Every time I see him, I smile. I smile. He smiled, smiled. That's it. I never opened a word. I never said anything to him. So that's how we're living. So... So when I get to know him, he was trying to discover a way to make it in life. And I see it in him, like, this guy, I think he just come... But I never asked him where you from and how long you been here. I just... I just, in my mindset, I know that he's a guy that he trying... He trying... He came from Africa. He trying to make it, and he trying to make it true. So like, that's how we met, like, on Facebook. Like, he would say hi, I would say hi. That's all. And luckily, like, once we got the community together, we got the organization running, everything. Our first inauguration, we invited him, but he didn't show up. He came for the second one. So when he came for the second one, I had Jeff. Jeff came, too, for our second inauguration that we had in... Back last year. So he encouraged me. Once we had the first inauguration, the second one, he encouraged me. He sent me a note, "Man, you can apply for this." I said, "What do you..." "In my heart, what do you mean? I don't know nothing about this." So he told me that... He sent me the application. If you're interested in it, you can apply for becoming a councilman. I said, "I ain't never done this, even though I would try, because I'm a community leader, and I'm the president of the association." So I can try to see what can I bring in, what can I bring... What can I offer? So I said, "Okay," I would give it a try. So I forgot about that. I filled out the application. So I was...
But we didn't forget about you.
We had an old mayor. I thought that was the old mayor calling me, because I had the phone number saved in my phone. So I said, "Wow." So I picked up the phone. He called and said, "The mayor called." He said, "Oh, congratulations." In my heart, I'm like, "Congratulations on what?"
Just randomly call people to congratulate.
So I'm like, "Oh, the new councilman." I'm like, "What can I do? I never did this before." Like, I never staying from council member, like, people before like that. So I don't know what can I do. I talked to God, and he directed me and said, "Don't worry. I got you." I said, "Okay." Then a few days, Abada called me. He texts me and said, "Congratulations." I said, "Oh." I said, "I know." In my heart, I said, "Okay, you did it." And I just want to know... I'm a simple guy and trying to make it in the community, trying to help other people. When you ask in the Liberians community, who mostly like active in the community, they will raise their hand and say, "Me. I don't have to give you too much. You can ask me how my back." I'm a simple guy, just trying to help whatsoever helped I can help. I can always help. And that's me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christopher.
You're welcome.
Happy to hear. One thing I want to note, too, is that when I called Christopher, he started a newer job at Austin Public Schools, and we didn't know if we could get him for this nighttime. It's kind of where his hours of work are. So kudos and thank you to the Austin Public Schools for allowing you the time off to come to these meetings for the three months that we might have you. So thank them, too, for us, if you could. But welcome as honorary council.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, thanks, Christopher. Moving on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion for number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Under the public hearings, item number five is a public hearing on sanitary sewer improvement assessments for the Turtle Creek Two area. The amount to be assessed is $104,100, a 4% for 10 years. Stephen?
This is part of our recently adopted program where we offered a hookup fee for property owners out in the Turtle Creek Two area, but we also gave them an option for assessment. And the folks on this assessment role have elected to have their hookup fee assessed. So we want to move forward with those assessments and get them recorded and make them official.
Okay. Anything, council? Council comments or questions? Otherwise, we'll take them one at a time. Under 5A, looking for a resolution for 5A, presentation of project and associated assessments.
So move the resolution.
No? We can do...
Just leave the presentation with letter B next.
Okay. And then B, call for written objections. Are there any written objections?
We have not received any written objections.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Under D, resolution declaring the cost, looking for a resolution. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller. Oops, sorry. Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under 5E, resolution, we're looking for a resolution adopting the assessment role.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Joyce? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number six is award bid for airport lighting improvements under 6A, awarding the bid. Stephen?
Yes, we took bids on April 28th for our lighting upgrades out at the airport. I believe council is aware of this project coming up, as we've been working on a few things with SEH. But with this project, we had three bidders, and Warner Brothers, Inc., they were the low bidder of the base bid at $322,780. That is for upgrading to LED lighting on the runway and the taxiway. That's what's included in the base bid, as well as some upgrades to our electrical building to upgrade some transformers that are necessary as part of the project. We did look at an alternate and to see where it would come in with our overall project cost. The alternate was to upgrade our signage out at the airport on the taxiway itself, and our signage out there designates different taxiways. We have five different taxiways that are all named and signed, and that was alternate one. And you can see the different ranges of cost for alternate one. With this project, we expect to have 100% funding from the FAA through an airport grant. And we did strongly consider alternate one, but we think in order to stay within budget, we would recommend just awarding the base bid to Warner Brothers in the amount of $322,780, and that would be our recommendation for tonight.
Questions?
Stephen, does the alternate one get funded by the FAA as well? Or why would we not take advantage of free quote-unquote money?
Well, a couple reasons, yes. It would be funded 100%. We did get a little bit of pushback with our project creep on this project from our FAA consultant, asking why the numbers were coming in a little bit higher as our base bid started to increase. So we didn't want to push it and kind of impact our relationship there and try to stress something that maybe wasn't quite ready for replacement when it came to that airfield signage.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. If nothing else, we're looking for a resolution for item number six, awarding the bid.
So move the resolution.
I second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Moving on to item number seven, a resolution approving the contract for SEH for engineering services on the airfield lighting project at the Austin Municipal Airport. Stephen, anymore?
Yeah, to work through the construction phase of the project that was just approved there is a proposal from SEH in the amount of $24,000 for construction administration and inspection. Some of the key items of their proposal are detailed there. Again, this cost would be funded 100% through our FAA grant, and we'd recommend moving forward a contract with SEH for this work.
Okay, council? Looking for a resolution then for number seven?
So move the resolution.
Second. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eight, resolution approving a modified individual control mechanism with Hormel Foods for the domestic plant. Stephen?
I'd like to touch on item eight and nine together. I have them included together in your memo. They're dealing with ICM agreement that we have with Hormel that regulates the strength and volume of waste that we receive from the Hormel plant. And one item has changed... The existing ICM agreement dates back to December of 2017, and it was a five-year agreement through 2022. The agreements can be opened from time to time when mutually agreed upon between both parties to make minor changes. And in this case, we, working with Hormel, have a minor change to item number three, which is language regarding pH sampling. So that has been revised in both the domestic and industrial ICM agreement for items eight and nine. So we would recommend approval of this revision.
Council? If not, we'll take item number eight with the domestic side of the plant first, looking for a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Abstain.
Obala.
Abstain.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes four zero with two abstaining, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is approving the modified ICM agreement with Hormel Foods for the industrial side of the plant. And Stephen, already touched on it, looking for a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Abstain.
Obala.
Abstain.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes four zero, Your Honor, with two abstaining.
All right, thank you. Moving on to number 10 is a resolution approving a modified individual control mechanism with Hormel Foods for the spice annex. Stephen?
Yeah, this is the annex or the spice plant located at 1816 Ninth Street Northeast. Again, this is a little newer ICM agreement, so we're just, as we've worked through flows at the facility over the last couple of years, we have some changes that we would recommend to more accurately meet some of the flow requirements of the plant. So with that, we originally had some temporary language, some temporary flow requirements in the initial ICM agreement. Those can now be dropped. We're outside of that initial window. Again, the sampling and the location, we want to more clarify where that will be done for both the city and the industry, and then also make some revisions to the billing language to more accurately correspond with the city ordinance. So we would recommend making these revisions to the existing ICM agreement.
Okay. Council, if no questions, looking for a resolution for item number 10?
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Abstain.
Obala.
Abstain.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes four zero with two abstaining, Your Honor.
I thought Councilmember Fisher was going to abstain because he has salt and pepper at home and spices. He didn't. Moving on to item number 11 is a resolution approving the county board classification for forfeited tax property, public sale of said property, and declaring the city's intention to reassess unpaid assessments. Ann?
Yes, so we have two resolutions here. The first lists a bunch of properties that came to forfeiture this year from the county. So in the forfeiture process right now, we have to declare to the county our assessments that were canceled through that forfeiture process. So we identify the parcels, and then if you see on the second page in bold by each parcel, it lists how much the city has expended in costs, either from snow removal, junk removal, hazardous housing, citations, any number of things. But that's not real estate taxes. That's assessments that have been canceled. So we're certifying to the county that we would like to recollect these amounts. And then I'll talk about the second resolution, too. The second resolution that we have here, this particular property, the HRA would like to keep it and redevelop it. So that particular piece, we have a separate resolution for, because we'll be asking the county board to allow us to keep that property. And just by chance, that property has no assessment. So we would request you approve both of those resolutions.
Council, any questions for Ms. Casel? If not, we'll take number 11 first, looking for a resolution.
I move the resolution.
Obala, thank you. Second. Jeff? Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. And we heard Ms. Casel's clarification on number 12, so approving the county board classification of forfeited tax property and declaring the city's intention to redevelop said property, looking for a resolution for number 12. So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Next, Tom. Number 13 is a resolution looking... Setting the public hearings for June 7th, 2021, for deferred sanitary sewer and water assessments. In 13A, it's setting a public hearing for deferred sanitary sewer assessments. Ann?
So yes, these properties are the ones we talked about. Stephen and I kind of had a presentation a couple of work sessions ago on April 5th. These are the properties that have been deferred from 30 to 35 years. So we're going to set those public hearings for June 7th. Just kind of letting the council know that those letters are going to go out next week. So if you get a call from someone, Stephen's number and my number is in that letter, too. So just let you know. But we will have to go through the assessment process for these properties. So this will be the first of the two public hearings, and then we'll have another one in July.
Okay. So it sounds like Ann's willing to take all the phone calls. If you want, just refer them to her as they come in. So looking for...
Be all good.
That's who they call anyway.
Resolution for 13A. So move the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And number 13B is setting a public hearing for deferred water assessments. So move the resolution. Second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Shusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number 14, a series of five motions for granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location. 14A is 1204 11th Avenue Southwest, the Duncan property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item number 14B is 107 Second Street Southeast, NC Real Estate Property.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. 14C is 1205 7th Avenue Northwest, the DAK Solutions Property.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. 14D, 503 8th Avenue Southeast, the Wakefield Property.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. 14E is 207 3rd Avenue Southwest, the Dune Acquisitions Property.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. 15 is a resolution approving a consulting contract with SEH for right-of-way permitting review. Stephen?
Yes, so we talked about this in upcoming larger project last, months ago, as we were developing our, our right-of-way ordinance. But we've been working with a telecommunications company on a citywide build-out project. It's tentatively planned for 2021. And, you know, citywide, we have in the range of 9,000 households and 600 businesses. Our, our community area is made up of about 8,200 acres and 150 miles of roadway. So a citywide project like this is a very big undertaking for us that we just, we don't, we can't staff up for and, and up and down for, for large projects like this. So we went out for proposals from consultants that have experience with right-of-way permitting work, and we developed an RFP that had some goals that we were looking to achieve as part of the project and some review criteria that we were looking for. And through that process, we, we got back three proposals from Bolton Inc., WHKS, and SEH. And through that process, we had estimated some, what we thought would be hours associated with the project, and then asked the consultants to develop a rate for the work to come up with a total cost. And all three of the engineering firms were very close. They were all right around $100,000 to provide this service. After reviewing the proposals, SEH's proposal, you know, I think all three of them could have done the work very well, but SEH's experience with right-of-way management seemed to stand out for us. And, and then in addition, based on their experience, they evaluated what we were looking for and made a determination that they believe the, the work can actually be done for $75,000 or less. So that, that weighed into our, our review analysis a little bit as well, but we think that they are well qualified to do this work. So we would recommend at this time extending a contract for professional services to SEH at an hourly rate not to exceed $75,000. And that would be for permit review for this, this project and also onsite inspection. So they will be performing both of those tasks. And cost for this would come out of the general fund or out of our professional services budget for this work. And with that, we would recommend extending this contract to SEH.
Counsel, any questions, Mr. Lang? If not, looking for resolution number 15? So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Number 16 is a resolution committing to a transfer of funds to the Austin Port Authority for YMCA site redevelopment purposes. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. We're asking to be able to transfer $650,000 from the building fund to the Port Authority. This would be related to the housing proposal that Mr. Stensel put forward. This is contingent upon the Port Authority approval of a purchase agreement with the YMCA and a development contract with Stensel Group. This will allow us to move forward with having the YMCA take action on the purchase agreement and have it before the Port Authority. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Question, isn't this a little premature? We don't even know that this is going to happen. We haven't had anything more back from Stensel. We don't know that the Y is willing to sell for 650. Do we need to act on this now, or can it wait?
I, I did get a commitment from the YMCA, Lisa and Baker, on the commitment for the price. Craig, anything else to add?
As far as the premature, they want to know that the property is moving towards being under contract to move the process along, as well as the TIF and the redevelopment and the purchase agreement. So we don't want to get ahead of our skis. If council isn't supportive of transferring the, the funds, then we need to go back to Stensel and adjust accordingly. So that's the timing of it, so it allows the Y to take action and consideration on their part. We generally have signed documents before the port from the other party, so that's what we'd work on as the development contract comes forward as well.
Thank you, Craig. Any other questions? Comments, looking for a resolution for number 16?
And move to approve.
Second. Tom.
Councilmember Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion pass, resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Number 17 is a motion approving the farmer's market request for use of land and as a mobile food location. Mr. Nelson.
We have Mary Ann Duran with us tonight from Impact Austin, and she has a short presentation.
Okay, Mary Ann, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, thank you for the chance to present to you guys. So the farmer's market project has been a collaboration between the City of Austin and Impact Austin to create a permanent location for a farmer's market space in Austin that not only addresses the community need for more access to healthy food, but also gives the market a sense of place and expands upon and grows the downtown area. So we have done the work of creating a governing board from many key organizations in our community, and this board has created a market structure that seeks to engage and represent really all aspects of our community, including the Moore County CEO students and immigrant-owned businesses, through the use of like sponsored vendor fees for those types of businesses, as well as provide outreach to low-income families through the use of SNAP and WIC at the market. And our goal is really to provide not only a market, but to create and grow a market experience that really nourishes and inspires all aspects of the community here in Austin and in the greater Moore County area. So pending approval from the city council tonight, we will be releasing plans this week to the community about the market as we start to approve vendors for a market even this year onsite. So we are seeking approval for the use of the site south of the Turp Ballroom, as well as approving licensed food trucks to be able to vend onsite during the market times and days for this year and into the future.
Okay, counsel, any questions for Mary Ann or Kevin?
Nope.
No, great project.
Looking forward to that. Looking forward to a motion also on number 17. So. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Motion carries. Citizens addressing the council, are there any citizens on Zoom or here in the chambers that would like to address the council? So hearing none. Honorary council member comments. Christopher, I don't think I, I warned you about this, but you did a nice job introducing yourself. Do you have any comments you'd like to make about your first meeting? It's this much fun every time, by the way. This much fun. So if you have something to add that you want to reflect on or anything, we're happy to hear your words.
Yeah, I just got a question for all the council member and the mayor. As the community grow, the community is growing, and Austin is about to rise up, and I think, I think you should be thinking about that because we've got more people as an immigrant, they don't have a lot of opportunity, a lot of learning center, they got kids, they got, we need more childcare and stuff, they got, they got problems. We need you to go in the community and ask question and get answer. Because when the communities grow, if you don't go in there and find out what's going on, it will bring progress. So as the community grow, you should think about that and think about people that come in the community.
That's all the question.
I appreciate your comments. That's what we're hoping you're, you're here to give us, is that kind of perspective. So Austin, I think, is well aware of what our deficiencies are, and we want to, we want to close those gaps, whether it's childcare or housing or anything else. Those seem to be the two that we're really focused on. So I appreciate those comments, and I look forward to more as you, as you grow and hear more council meetings. So thank you. Counsel, anything else for Christopher?
Mr. Christopher, I wish you good luck. If you have any question, don't hesitate to ask anyone on the, you know, on the council here, we'll be happy to help you. I was there before, I was nervous the first time, but from learning experience, you never know, a few years in the road, you may sitting behind here. So I hope that will open you a lot of doors. So this is, this is why we are transforming Austin and uplifting, you know, everyone in the community, either you're immigrant or you're born here. We just want to make sure our young generation is uprising and they involved in the community. Again, thank you for what you do for your community.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Moore.
Thanks, Christopher.
All right, reports and recommendations. Craig?
I got notice this morning from the legislative aide with Senator Dorick. Our technical correction bill on our 7.45 million will be up in the Senate, so I'll be testifying tomorrow at 4:30 on Senate File 572, in hopes that they are agreeable to providing some flexibility on that previous appropriation. Otherwise, Julie and Stephen have reports.
Julie, let's go with Julie first. Hi, Julie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just wanted to pass along a little bit of information that's coming up for the library in May. Share my, I won't share my screen. So the Social Justice Book Club is trucking along, we're going into month five. The book this month is This Chair Rocks: A Manifesto Against Ageism. This has been a really fun book. It's, you know, on the front cover, it says it's one of the 100 best books to read at any age, and I'm really finding that to be true. It's a lot of fun. And if you make it to the book club, we've got some fancy little buttons that say Old Person in Training. So if anybody's interested, contact the library, and we'll get you that link. We've had a pretty good turnout to these book clubs, and we've had some really great conversations, so we're looking forward to carrying that on through. And if you check out the library's webpage, you can see what books are coming up each month. And then also in May, the Austin Page Turners are very excited to get back to their event. And we have Alison McGee coming on May 22nd, on Saturday. We do have a free writer's workshop with her in the park just west of the library at 10:30 on May 22nd, but we do have limited spots. If you know anyone who's a writer or who's interested in writing and might want to meet with Alison, have them call the library, we can get them signed up. And then the main event will be at 1 o'clock that afternoon, it's a Saturday. We are going to order perfect weather so that it's nice. We do have a tent that will be up just in case, but it's going to be a nice event for us on May 22nd, kind of getting out again, and looking forward to some of those summer programs that we'll be able to do out the park. And if you have any questions, again, you can check out the library's website. That's all I've got tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Stephen?
I have three items I just wanted to mention, may have seen it, but we started our street reconstruction today. And so work road closed by the post office, so that work has, has started. Street reconstruction season has begun. We have another roadway that'll be starting midweek, that's over in the northeast, First Avenue, 16th Street Northeast. And then we have other projects that will be staggered out kind of every two weeks for the next month or so, we'll be starting a new project. So it's that time of year. Also, on that same note, the MINDOT is planning to start reconstruction of the 28th Street Bridge out by the airport and the country club. That, that project is planned to begin the week of May 10th, so next week. The following weekend, which is the 14th, 15th, and 16th, they will be removing the bridge, so I-90 will actually be closed, and vehicles will be sent over the ramps and back down overnight during the bridge removal process. So that'll be a little bit unique there for the traveling public. That project is planned to continue through October. So that will be happening, and information is going out to adjacent property owners and businesses there. And the third item for you tonight is, again, just a reminder of our electronics recycling event. We were not able to hold the event in 2020, so looking forward to getting that going again here in 2021. As in the past, it will be held at the fairgrounds. The drop-off time, excuse me, the event is Saturday, May 8th. The drop-off time is from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM, and I strongly encourage everyone to wait until noon or later if you're planning to drop anything off. We always have a lineup of vehicles waiting for us at 8:00, 8:30 in the morning, and by noon, you could drive right on through on most, most drop-off dates. So we are still looking for volunteers. We do have a few on the list. The company that we work with, Retro Fit Recycling out of Otana, they will bring down five or six workers to help the event, but we're always looking for volunteers to help bridge the gap. Again, as I've mentioned in the past, we typically will have two shifts. One shift is from 8:30 AM until 11:30 AM, and the second shift is from 11:30 AM until 2:30 PM. If anyone is interested in volunteering, we would request that you call our city office, and we will get you registered on the list. Our office number is 437-9950, and we can get you lined up with a shift time, and we greatly appreciate those that are looking to volunteer for this event. And also, one other thing on it, is, is it works for all different ages and, and types of folks. It, you know, when someone comes with electronics recycling, it may have a variety of things, maybe a TV, maybe a computer, maybe a laptop or a keyboard. So you can always pick whatever items you feel comfortable grabbing, and someone else will grab something else. We're just looking for a large, large group of volunteers to help distribute the work throughout the course of the day. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. We have Representative Mueller on the Zoom, and I don't want to ignore you, so I'm interested if you have comments, Patty?
Thank you, Mayor King and council members. It's really exciting to be with you today from, from St. Paul. I actually am in my office today, and we have two weeks left, two and a half weeks left of the session this week. People were, are doing the conference committees for all the different August bills, and then we'll get all of those back. And the weekend of, like, all next week, and then our signing die is May 17th, when we need to have our balanced budgets. And so that's going to be lots of exciting time debating on the floor. I think probably one of the, I really wanted to thank Mayor King. There, it was such a beautiful ceremony last Saturday for the opening of the park with the lights and the, and the bleacher, basketball court. That was such a really beautiful ceremony and such an example of how our community works together to represent all people group and to, I don't know, it was, it was really great to see everyone there and to use that, to use the basketball courts. And if you need to see a picture of Mayor King in a sombrero, feel free to look at my representative Facebook page for that, and you can see it, which is fantastic. Also, I mean, Sheriff Steve is in a poncho, so that's also amazing. So I think some of the other things that I have to say is I'm really excited to hear that Senator Dorick is going to be able to take up the 7.5 million for the wastewater treatment plant. I have been lobbying hard at the capital investments committee for the 13 million for the wastewater treatment plant, and we have some really good news with that. First of all, knowing that capital investments is one of the few committees that has to have a supermajority, so the majority party needs votes from the minority party, which means that they have to include some bills that, you know, actually help the minority party. And the person who is in charge, like our minority lead on that committee, is, I have been telling him about this, I've been talking about this, I've received a letter from Hormel about the, about the wastewater treatment plant. The American Rescue Plan that President Biden is, I guess it's the money that's coming from the American Rescue Plan, some of it is earmarked for bonding specifically for wastewater treatment plants. And so because of that, we have a decent chance to be able to get this done. And the goal is to be able to, hopefully, if not this, if they don't do a supplemental, if they don't do some sort of supplemental bonding, that definitely have it in, we do, and have that all ready to go. But I have, I've been lobbying for that hard. And then the only other thing is that as soon as session is done, I'm going to be back down in the district working with our childcare providers and talking to them about how we can streamline, remove barriers so that more people from the refugee and immigrant population can enter into this beautiful business that we have. I've been researching bills from other states, and I actually wrote a column about it in the Austin Daily Herald this past Saturday, and really want to give props to Obala, who came to me and said that we really need to work on this issue, but so I'm really hoping to work on this together with him. And so that's kind of what's been going on, as always. Thanks for all of your communication with me, and any, anytime you have any questions. Oh, and sorry, one last thing, I'm sorry, Mayor King. I've been, also been in constant contact with our law enforcement, as I also serve on the Public Safety Committee. There is a lot of concern, a lot of constituents have contacted me concerned about some of the police accountability bills that have been introduced into the Public Safety Committee. I have contacted Sheriff Steve and also the Dodge County Sheriff and the Freeborn County Sheriff, and also the Chief of Police there in Austin. We have been communicating, and I have assured them that I'm 100% supporting of police, and that we're going to make sure that whatever measures are there are going to be appropriate so that both police and our public can remain safe. So as always, please let me know if you have any questions, and I'll be back down in the district. I think, Mr. Lang, I can get Mr. Dan and I to take a shift for this exciting electric, electronic recycling event and see if we can get some of this done for you.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Mueller, I appreciate the hopeful comments on the wastewater treatment money, that'd be excellent. So thank you for your work in that and others, all the other work you do, thank you. City council, comments? Paul, I'll start with you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jason?
Three quick things. One is I'd echo the thanks to Patty in terms of the work that she's doing on behalf of Austin, specifically around the wastewater treatment plant, obviously just vital, vital for, you know, our budget and our community. Number two is want to make sure to recognize Ann Casel and the Complete Count Committee for the work that they did. Obviously, you know, I'm sure most folks have seen it, but I think if Austin, or I'm sorry, if Minnesota had counted 29 fewer people, or New York would have counted 89 more. So I'm not entirely sure how that math works, but that's federal government, so it is what it is. We would have lost a congressional seat and obviously, you know, tens of millions of dollars of annual funding. And so you think about, you know, the work that so many people in this community did to, you know, get a neighbor to fill out the form or make sure that, you know, somebody got counted. Obviously, you know, when it comes down to 29 people in a state of four or five million people, that's, you know, every local effort works. So thank you, Ann, for your leadership on that. And then finally, next Tuesday, we'll be representing our community for a Southeastern Minnesota Together webinar on the work that we're doing as a welcoming community. So if anybody's interested, that'll be 11:30 to 12:15 on Tuesday, and that's through Smith and Welcoming America. So it should be good opportunity to continue to tell the story of how we are doing things well in Austin.
Excellent. Obala?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Jeff?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Rebecca, welcome.
Your Honor.
Mike?
Representative Mueller touched on, I just want to thank the Oaxacan community that reached out to the Rotary Club about two years ago. They are the ones who really kind of use Rotary Park a lot, and they've been doing more and more events there, and they had some ideas of how we could help improve the park, and so we have a really good local Rotary Club that were able to do some fundraising and some grant matching. And so with the new lights and bleachers, we're excited to see the new tournaments and things that they'll be doing there, and really impressed that, just the kind of community and really impressed that, just the kind of community organization. I know that Moore County Health, I think, was able to vaccinate 40 or 50 people down there this weekend, which is great outreach. So just thanks to everybody who helped make that happen. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Joyce?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to add too, that Oaxacan community event on Saturday was very well received, and they were just so gracious and filled with gratitude with the, the level of service the Rotary provided and the city provided to light the basketball court up. And so it's just great to see the parks being used. Kevin Nelson was there. He also had a sombrero on too, I believe, or at least some kind of Mexican. They gave gifts. They were, they were very much filled with gratitude. So we appreciate them and everyone who uses our parks. With that, looking for a motion to adjourn to Monday, May 17th at 5:30.
So moved. Second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Thank you. Take a five-minute break, move into the work session.
How many you want us up here or the table?
We have 108 pages of, of audit to go through. I'm sure.
That's why we're going in the work section.